Call the Newport City Council meeting to order from Monday, April 1st, 2019, 6:30 PM. City Council Room, all members of the council are present. Others include James Johnson, Actuary Treasurer, and Laura Godwin, our City Manager. The next item is to approve the minutes of March 18th, 2019. I would entertain a motion.
Look to the minutes of March 18th, so 2019?
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Seceded, any discussion on the minutes? And hearing that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries. Next is comments by members of the public. Let's see where anyone signed up for anything, then we'll move on. Next item is celebration of the young children event and request to waive fees. We have Jessica here, from the rec department.
Yes, there I am. So you guys got a letter, a memo there with information Diane Nichols Fleming is here to present to you just briefly. I do want to make note though that the invoice that you received is not correct. The $697.50 tallies up service for an hour and a half for the police department support, but they have a minimum requirement of two hours for their union contracts, so that needs to be changed. The actual total is $772.50, that's the total invoice, so it did increase by $150. So that's what the amount of the request is today.
Yes, so this is, we've been doing this for over 20 years, and so it has been a tremendous amount of support that has occurred from the town, but it's also a way for the community to shine and for people. I have been having people say to me, "When is the parade, when is the parade?" Even though it rained horribly last year and we were like drowned rats walking down the street, the kids loved it and it was just a super time to switch around. Because it rained, we ended up in the rec hall. But even that was a great turnout, there were over 200 people here last year. When it is outside, we tend to have between 200 and 200-500 people that come. It's an opportunity to, we usually have a school band or two that marches with us, and we can't say thank you enough for the support that you give us, because it is a lot of money and it's a lot of time. And so we are very appreciative of that and we just hope that you will be able to grant that waiver again this year.
I just have a couple of questions, and it's not in any way, shape, or form to be taking this criticism of the event or not support for the event, just education from my part.
Certainly.
So the 200-500 people, is that generally the group that's in the park or is it along Main Street?
So the way, what happens is people, children come from the area childcare's, the area schools, so they come from Brighton, they come from Lowell, we meet down here. And so it is families, children, I'm sorry, gateway. We meet at the gateway and then we march up and to the park. And so it's really everywhere along the way. Some might meet us at the park, but generally speaking, everybody joins in the parade.
So the people who are in the parade as...
We are the parade, right, yes.
The reason, one of the questions, sort of things that came up was just because of, you know, sort of stopping Main Street and disrupting traffic and that kind of stuff was there. Is it possible for an alternate route, just, you know, not for this year, obviously, but an alternate route so that we don't have to block off Main Street? And then, you know, does the boardwalk, the parade, that would take...
So we have considered that as we were looking at it. We're going to end up blocking at some point to get across. I think the route several years ago did get switched up. It used to shut down the road completely and now it has, where they, it's just this section right here that gets shut off right in front of like the library and that. But then once it gets to the light, we shift to one side so that there's two-way traffic going on.
And I think if they did opt to use the boardwalk like we do for our Halloween parade, for example, I think you're talking about the area that would stop traffic would be right in front of Gardner Park, probably?
Yes, yes.
So there would be a reduction in staff time, because it would just be a matter of that crossing area and staffing that, as opposed to putting out the sign package. So it would eliminate Public Works from this completely and drop the number of police officers down to only 31.
And the only, to me, the con of that would be it is a tremendous sight to see 200-500 young people walking down the street. And their faces are just beaming and it really is a tremendous change. It doesn't mean that they wouldn't have attention and those opportunities on the boardwalk, but it's a different experience.
Other questions? The one, I was pleased to see that you had raised some funds towards it, because this is a supervisory union event?
It is, it's a collaboration. So it is with Building Right Futures, which is a statewide organization, as well as partially from the supervisory union. And the majority of, it's very challenging, as you know, that to use certain sets of funds. So we have worked together to collaboratively raise money to go toward those fees.
The only reason I was asking is supervisory union covers the whole district.
Correct.
And where this is impacting the city directly versus... And that's what I was thinking, is if the supervisory union, being a collaborative amongst all the schools, could help out a little more. You know, that's all I was getting at with that aspect, because they cover the 13 communities which aren't impacted by this, where we are.
Right.
And that's the only reason I was asking about that.
And it had been suggested too, that perhaps we should look also in terms of sharing that wealth, so to speak, by traveling to maybe some of the different communities too. And perhaps when you're moving into your wife, perhaps when you're doing it in Brighton. So that has been suggested as well.
That's all I have, other questions from anyone? Then, then we would need a motion. Oh Jess, did you have something else to add, I'm sorry?
No, I just wanted to point out the same thing that you did, that they did indeed raise some money to contribute towards the expenses this year, which is...
Yes. So if there's no other questions, I would entertain a motion, if the council so chooses, to waive the event fees, which would be a total of the $700 and $72...
$772.50, yeah.
And that's taking into account the 96 out there. Alright, so it'd be, we're waiving a total of $772.50 if the council so chooses.
I'll make that motion.
A motion has been made, is there a second?
One second.
Seceded, any discussion on that motion? The motion, then hearing that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, the date?
May 2nd.
May 2nd, that's a Thursday. And it will be sunny this year.
And the snow will be gone?
Right.
Will the snow be gone?
Yeah, if our order, we put it in.
Okay. Moving on, the next item is the Northern Borders Regional Commission Grant application. I'll let you give a brief overview, Laura?
So we have an opportunity through the RCBI project, we're dealing with Mike Welch, to apply for a Northern Borders grant. And the letter of notification was due Friday. So I did submit the letter with the intent to bring it before you tonight. Pardon my voice. If you decide that you don't want to pursue this, we simply will try the letter. So I just want to assure you of that. The purpose of this would be a request of a pretty significant amount of funds, $500,000, for the purpose of improving the intersection by the Waterfront Mall and Gardner Park. We anticipate the total cost to be $625,000. The grant request is $500,000. The match would be $125,000. An in-kind match is allowed, which means the work from Public Works would count towards it. $125,000 is quite a bit of money. And one of the things that we have in our budget is $40,000 for engineering for the three traffic lights. If we time this right, we'll be able to use that towards the match. And coming up with the remaining approximately $80,000, I think will be easily found through their in-kind, through the laboring equipment will be used. So one of the ideas that we're looking at, this is from the Waterfront and Downtown Master Plan Intersections Study. We had a meeting today with Steve Posler, who is the Palmer Lowe's general contractor. I was with him for about two hours today. Along with Doug Morton, who is the NVDA Traffic Specialist, and Tom and Mike. And we talked about best laid plans for that particular intersection. Palmer Lowe's are very interested in working with the city and timing their part of this with us. And that's a really big advantage for us. So one of the things that we've asked of them is if they would be willing to move their intersection across the bell road so it's in alignment with our bridge, and they are. And they're willing to work with a railroad company, because that's their easement. So that would be their cake. And that's a big ask of the city, and the fact that they're willing to do that makes this very appealing. The other thing that they're interested in doing is reconfiguring their parking lot so that the alignment of the cars is different. They will have to make some modifications. Again, this was only in concept, but they've embraced it. We're willing to work with them, with our engineers as well, to see if this is the right design for them. Because actually increases their number of spaces. And they have to be mindful of pedestrian traffic and truck traffic and loading traffic. So there's other things that they have to consider. So that was, that's a very exciting thing for us. Timeline is, the application is due, I believe it's May 15th. It's not a big window of opportunity. We'll find out about the award in this federal fiscal year, which means you'll probably find out around August. The fiscal year begins October 1st, 2019. It has a three-year window, so we have a year of the three years to confirm our match. And the engineering would most likely begin after the award and the permission to proceed. So we have a logical sequence. This would be a project if awarded, it would be our priority for next year. But this intersection is our priority for this year.
Does this, when you talk about the causeway, are we going from the bridge to East Main? That whole section or just the intersection?
Focus would be on the intersection, but I have great interest in pulling the aesthetics of that area more into our project. So once we start peeling the engineering for the actual intersection and seeing what we have available, we're interested in having matches to our downtown. And repaving or re, we don't pave the streetwalk, but rebuilding the streetwalk. And there are some traffic calming strategies that we'd like to try. So we would be, anything new on the road, we'd be exploring what would work out through what's called a road diet. And that is where you work with AARP, who is interested in working with us. And you've actually used cones and hay bales and things like that to mimic what the new traffic pattern would be. So it's not like it would just happen overnight. There would be some testing and some trial and error to make sure with whatever reconfiguration on that particular ingress into the Waterfront Mall would be before it became permanent.
No, my reason for asking is all the underground wiring utilities, if that is part of this project.
Oh, that definitely is a factor. We have to make sure that engineering considers all of that before we do anything.
Other questions from the council members?
If the council is inclined to approve this, I would ask the motion to be approval to submit the current plan to authorize the city manager to sign any official documents.
Questions, and I would entertain a motion if they so choose to authorize the application for the grant and authorize the city manager to sign corresponding documents. A motion to be made, is there a second? Made and seconded, any discussion on that? And hearing that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, is there a copy of what Mr. O'Ginver's reading from?
You can have it.
This will be attached in the minutes next time, too.
Okay, the next item, it's two, actually it should be two grant applications with the AARP. The first one is the Challenge Grant, and then the second one is a Placemaking Grant. And I'll let the city manager kind of give a brief overview.
Okay. These are grant opportunities that we'd like to partner with the downtown designation organization for city for downtown designation operation. We have an opportunity for two grants through AARP. The first one is called the Challenge Grant. That is opportunity to apply for matching funds for the BORIC award. As you know, the BORIC was awarded an amount of $35,000. The original grant application was for just less than $60,000. And we have accepted those grants and have obliged and committed to come up with the naming funds. Through this grant, if it's awarded, we'll be able to do that. So I would encourage the council to make the same type of motion to authorize the city to work with the downtown designation to apply for this grant and to authorize the city manager to sign any relevant documents to Nicole Disgagnes, I'm sorry.
Questions on this grant, application? Then we'll entertain a motion to apply for the AARP Challenge Grant. A motion to be made, is there a second?
Second.
Seceded, discussion on that? Hearing that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. The next one is an AARP, the first one, just to reiterate, the AARP Challenge Grant, that's a nationwide grant. The, okay, so the next...
And that was for $25,000?
Yes, for $25,000, yeah. I almost said 35, but that was the other number, 25. Okay. And then the next one that is an AARP Vermont Grant. It's an AARP Vermont Placemaking Grant, and I'll let you give her.
We have received these before, and they've been very nice. We were able to refurbish benches last year. And this year, we have an opportunity to use $3,000 as literally seed money to kickstart the Botanical Garden concept. And as you know, we have created our City Landscaper position, which we'll talk about soon. And this again would be a collaborative effort between the city of Newport and the Downtown Development Organization. And the purpose would be, again, to merge the ongoing landscaping activities of the city that have created the city's Botanic Garden. That was something that was mentioned in our award-winning Downtown Master Plan. And it's also something that we're working towards with a budget that we put together for the City Landscaper. This would be in addition to that if it's awarded. So we're very excited about it. We also think that this is something that, or the Downtown Design Committee, which our City Landscaper is heading up and they're completing this plan soon. It's really nice. Again, if the city council is inclined, I would ask for a motion to move forward with a grant that will authorize the city manager to sign all of those documents.
Any motion to make that motion?
Make that motion? I'd make the motion to move forward with the AARP Vermont Placemaking.
Motion to be made, is there a...
The manager to sign on any related documents.
Okay, motion's been made, is there a second?
One second.
Seceded, discussion?
I'd just like to say, I think this is pretty exciting and I would like to, you know, be quite attractive.
I'm waiting, I'm watching the causeway. And I know that they're baby trees, but I'm just hoping that I see some white blossoms along the causeway this year.
That would be nice.
You know, and all of this is just, it's going to be great for the city. Nice, clean, fresh.
Robert stopped in today and gave an update on the service berry trees. Said that one of them did get eaten by a beaver, but other than that, the blossoms are full and everything's alive and they look like they're going to be great.
And I know the Royal Club is interested in purchasing additional trees for the additional continuation in the causeway. And that was discussed at a meeting, and so that's something to coordinate with Robert and the club. But to lose only one tree, had to be a pesky beaver.
They need to live too.
They need to live too, I guess. So, alright, so motions made and seconded, any other discussion? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, is an extra copy of that information?
The next item is City Landscaper Budget Reallocation, and I'll let the city manager explain this aspect.
You have a memo that is overly detailed. And the reason it's overly detailed is because this is our framework of setting up the City Landscaper's ability to be paid and do business. So I apologize for that detail, but again, it's something that was sent to everybody who this affects, which is of course payroll. And Jess Booth and Tom Burnier, for without which their contribution to this wouldn't be possible. So what we wanted to do is make sure that we were scaled to the penny. And what you'll see on the back is the scale to the penny. So Robert starts his job today, foolishly, and he was here. And in order to make this work from April 1st to December 31st, we cross over two fiscal years. So we have reallocated the funds that both Recreation and Public Works allocate to this, and we have established a new DEPT ID, which is a 06. In order to establish a new DEPT ID, we need council permission. And what will happen, when you get your budget, you will see, just finding myself here, you will find your 06 category and it will show up right after 05 and it will be entitled City Landscaper. This is how we will begin to track their expenses. So from, in this fiscal year, we will be taking the funds as been indicated and the memo that you have that is overly detailed instructs those of us who need that information how to allocate the dollars. And then starting July 1st, it'll be much clearer. So the motion on the table that I'm asking from council is to allow the City Attorney Treasurer to establish the required class of codes and account numbers to accommodate the newly created position of City Landscaper as directed at your February 11th, 2019 meeting. Can't be any more complicated. It's administrative.
Questions from the council members on this?
I don't need to know the complicated stuff, but I'd be very interested to know a total figure of how much money needs to be re-allocated.
The total amount, and this is from April 1st to December 31st, is $60,023.20.
So basically what we're going to see in the budget is that we're going to see the 06 category theoretically overspent, because there's nothing budgeted there. It will show up there, but that would be offset by where the money is, will be not spent as much in those categories. So that's basically what's happening.
I wish it could have been the Eloquim.
Okay.
But we had, we had money budgeted for beautification and other things that is being allocated for this.
Yes, that starts July 1st.
But that's July 1st.
July 1st.
Yes, so we have approximately, between, we have about $10,000 left in the Centennial budget. Those funders have given us permission to use our beautification, so we'll spend out all of those necessities.
So I'll make, if I get it off, make a motion to...
You can read it.
Oh, I could do that, can't I? So, here it is, set the bottom.
Set the bottom.
I knew that too. So I'll make a motion to establish the required class of codes and account numbers to accommodate the newly created position of City Landscaper as directed at their, oops, as directed at the February 11th, 2019 meeting. The class of the City Landscaper and the account numbers would be the 06-10 category.
Motion's been made, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second the motion.
Made and seconded, discussion on that motion? And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I heard the money's coming from UGW and Recreation? And the $60,000, is that just his salary or is that for product?
His product, his file.
May I have a copy of that or is it, is it kind of laid out in there that I...
If it's laid out, it's very boring.
Okay, thanks.
Moving on. The next item is the Rules of Procedure. This is something that we have to adopt every year. And so I have it on the agenda. Questions from those on this? Nothing...
No changes, right?
There's no changes. I'm going to ask council members first, please.
No, stand up.
And then I'll wait till there's a motion before I will go to the audience. Any other, any questions from council members on this? There were no changes regarding the Rules of Procedure, just something we have to adopt?
I would just comment or discussion, or to comment, I guess, is that we view the Secretary of Transit's meeting law and nothing in our Rules and Procedures violates anything in that from the Secretary of Transit's Transit and Transit Office. We seem to be working.
Any other questions from council members?
Yes. I think it was about a year and a half ago or so that we adopted this for the first time, or at least it was my first time. And I know that we had added some language, or maybe we just made a verbal decision to post all of the non-confidential documents on Monday morning before the council meeting. And I don't remember if we put that in there as written language or if we just said, "Okay, that's the way we'll do it."
So I almost think it's part of the participation guidelines, I'm not sure. What's in here has taken my statute. I don't think we modified that, but I think we made a motion. And our, the guidelines make reference to two meetings. I can go back and check that. It's become process now. So I think that's how it happened. I can go back and check.
It's really the process that I care about, not so much the language, so.
Now these match exactly with the law they had, which they just happened to put out in their little newsletter that they said they had modern Rules of Procedures, so I had to look at it. Actually theirs and ours, I believe, are identical, word for word. So, other questions from anyone as far as this, that we need a motion? If they so choose to adopt the Rules of Procedure? to adopt the rules of procedure? Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, discussion from council members? The public?
I would ask you to amend the rules of public participation to include the following. And we have addressed this before and you even pointed out, some of your members pointed out, that it was reasonable that after a presentation, that, for instance, about the budget, that questions and comments should be asked or allowed after each presentation. And sometimes we have a presentation that comes from outside, you know, somebody will come in and they make a presentation to all of you. And sometimes we're allowed to ask questions and make comments and sometimes we're told it's totally for council. And that leaves us with asking a question at the next session in open comments, when the party who has just made the presentation the week before is no longer there. So it, it makes it a moot point. So while this gives us the right, and you have formally given us the right to ask questions or to make comments or ask questions upfront and then before a vote, I'm also asking that you allow us, the public will also be afforded a reasonable amount of time to ask questions and make comments after any presentation. And you know that we, over the, our history of being here, we've never taken up very much, the public has never taken up very much of your time and we've never extended a meeting very long, so this would not take much time. But it would encourage the public to know that if an item is on the agenda, they can come and ask questions or make comments on that agenda item. They don't have to make it upfront before they even heard what the person is going to say, they can make them just after the presentation, reasonably.
Another way to solve that is we can move public, we can move comments to the end of the agenda. If, you know, we're not doing anything out of the ordinary, I actually consulted some of my fellow mayors. Some of them don't even have public comments, because, but we do. We allow public comments in the beginning of the meeting and I ask them about presentations that they have and they say that once they get through public comments, they, it's the agenda for the city council. So I did do a little homework on that aspect regarding the public comment period and comments.
Who's gonna offer that? Your rules of procedure have to do with your procedure at the meetings, your guidelines are a different document?
Well, I mean, you don't have to mimic a strict city who doesn't allow any comments. We've always said we wanted the public to come and participate and to feel welcome and this is a way of doing it. And it also is something that individual members have suggested, that they didn't even feel comfortable making comments during the budget last year. And this just formalizes the chance. And I didn't certainly feel, I knew I couldn't ask any comments until all the budget was prepared, which made it ridiculous at the very end, after you've had, I don't know, six or seven meetings, to be having to make comments on every single thing that might have been an issue. And so I had to choose amongst them. It wasn't, it wasn't fair and it didn't give you a fair presentation of what the public was thinking about various parts of the budget, for instance.
So that's addressed now in the guidelines, right? It's not allowing comment on presentation. So if we were gonna change something, we could change it in the guidelines and not necessarily in the procedure. Because guideline 10 says presentations to the council are not open to public comment.
Which, what are you looking at?
The ones that you did.
Number 10.
So your quote tonight is just about the public participation document? That's not, that's your guidelines? It's two different documents.
I would think that our procedure is fine. If we wanted to change something, it would end up being the guidelines, but not necessarily now, because we're looking at the procedure right now.
See, I saw this, which is part of this.
That's your signature page.
For the rules of procedure. Where they have public.
Right, that's page three.
Right.
You have this, this and that.
Yes, that's what we're discussing.
Right. So your guidelines are a different document as a facilitator's tool? The guidelines of participation are something that is up to the facilitator to use as a tool? So it's two separate things?
This is what I generally follow here, but I don't have to follow it to a T, which I haven't. I have allowed comment after presentations. It's up to the facilitator or myself, because I'm the one running the meeting and so, and I tend to follow Robert's rules. But I also open things up for discussion after these presentations. I have kind of, we think, I could leave several presentations where I opened up the floor for discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
I think having some consistency, knowing for sure what's gonna happen in those instances would be helpful for the public. Because you're right, sometimes you do open it generously for public comment after a presentation and then other times, whether it's an issue of time or whatnot, you don't. So I think having it codified where you could allow.
But I think I should be given the leeway as the moderator. Biggest part of running the meetings is... This smells of train of thought, I'm sorry. I mean, we did go along with allowing discussion after, after motions, but we also have to remember that government has to operate at a certain level and meetings are run at a certain level. These meetings, a lot of mine are for the council to do our business and that is what these meetings are for. And if we have a presentation coming in, I mean, the other way around it would be to move public comment at the end of the meeting, which I could easily do. Which would give the public, you know, time to comment on things. Seth?
I shut it off.
He's being serenaded? What? It's not you, it's not you for a change? I looked at him first. I had to look at him first.
Or you knew it was mine, you think?
Go ahead.
So the difference between we have a, when there's a motion and there's time for public input on that, and that's when the council's gonna be taking action on something. So there's time for people to weigh in on an action that the council's gonna be taking. As opposed to a presentation, when somebody is coming, you know, a third party's coming in to present something to the council that we're not necessarily taking action on, it's to present and it's not, I don't see that as a public hearing or a public forum, that's more, I wanna come in and I have an idea, whatever it is, and I wanna tell the council about it. And that's different than a motion where the council's gonna take action. Yeah, I'm not, I guess that's two separate, different things. And that, for, when the council's gonna take action, there is the time for public input on action that the council will take.
Yes, I understand what you're saying, but it's not always so cut and dry. Oftentimes, we at the table will have a long discussion about a topic before a motion is made and then the public is denied the opportunity to have any input until a motion is made.
Right, and then there's time for public input. And if something, somebody says something that influences your vote, how you think, how you look at it, then you would go according.
Personally, I prefer to hear from the public all along the way rather than just a very precise moment in time, because we can always avoid making a motion and then the public has no say whatsoever.
So could I, the agenda was to renew the rules of procedure?
I guess, excuse me, I mean, I guess what was confusing was this, part of the rules of procedure is public participation and then we have participation guidelines. I think that's, that's confusing.
I mean, I think whatever we do, you have the opportunity to minimize some of the issues. And if they're willing to make a point. See, I don't think it should be this question back and forth. A comment should be a point that you wanna make under your comment. You know, here's how I feel, thank you for how you feel. I'll take into consideration. So I don't think you have to look at it like it's gonna be really fine.
I also look at the council meetings, I guess, differently than public hearings. These are public hearings every two weeks. It's with a council who is elected to represent the voters or the citizens to conduct the business and that's the way, I, I look at it that way too, where, you know.
So I'll make a motion to adopt this, to put city rules of procedure for city council meetings.
Did we already have a motion? Are we ready for a vote?
We did, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that we did.
We had a motion already, that's how we opened up the discussion.
I'm sorry, of course.
So a motion's been made and seconded, other discussion?
I'd like to hear your suggested wording and, and where would you put it?
I would put it in at public participation 2. After, at the beginning of each agenda, but before any action is taken by the public, there may be as much as 15 minutes afforded for open public comment. By majority vote, the body may increase the time for open public comment, period. The public will also be afforded a reasonable amount of time to ask questions and make comments after any presentation.
So I assume your definition of a presentation is broader than, say, some outside guest coming in to do, you know, like the complete streets or some, I assume you're referring to things like our budget discussions with the department heads? That would be a presentation? I'm just making sure we're speaking the same language.
But I look at that differently. We give the department heads a chance to come in, present the budget to the city council. Let us digest it before it's all opened up, because I think it's the council's budget to present, yes, public comment, but, public input, but each council member could also pull or go around, part of our job is to ask people, you know, and the public about different aspects that we're working on and doing, but the reason why I had the budget presented last time the way it was, was to give our department heads the courtesy to present the budget to the council, let us ask questions. And then we, we can change it, as I said, we can change it this coming time to allow public comment at the end of the presentation. So that is gonna happen, but I think we all kind of agreed to that, that after each presentation. So I don't think, but I mean, do you then have comment after every single item that's not a vote? Is that what, is that what the council, you know, wants? In my opinion, we, most anything we vote on, everything that we vote on is open to public comment as it is.
I don't understand, Mr. Mayor, if there's a, a time for public comment before a vote, why wouldn't we have public comment again after the vote? It seems redundant.
I think what Ms. Cholo wants is to have, say we have somebody coming in to do a presentation on, I'll, we'll say the 12th, the week they came in, I'll use that as an example. Even though there was no motion taken that night, they wanna have the public make comments on the presentation.
Or ask questions.
Or ask questions. That's what, I mean, I think what we've been doing is we're working for me, for, for the council.
So we changing number 10 on this? Not changing the blue one at all.
It's not changing the blue one at all, it's changing the white one.
You mean, keep the white one consistent? I think that's what you're saying.
Because we're trying to think back on a circumstance where we actually had just a presentation. And I, the one that I can remember was the Greenfield presentation.
The Greenfield?
Was that what it was? Something with the, one sound, something like the city or something.
Brownfield?
Yeah, no.
Brownfield, we had White and Burke, we had some outside people.
And I think there was questions. I don't think everybody was silent on any of those. I don't remember people being silent after the presentations. We had questions, I'm sure, I can remember questions coming from the audience.
We have been denied the chance to ask questions at some presentations.
Not that many, though.
No, not that many, I just wanted to formalize.
Not that many at all.
And I think, what we've got, I think what we've got works. I think it works. If we wanna make an adjustment, we should talk about the other place and how you move the meeting along.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second discussion, not anymore than, all those in favor?
I decided, I'm sorry. I think the ask to make it consistent so that the public can always count on whether or not they're going to be allowed to ask any questions is a good reason to, to make that amendment. Just so with that, it's always consistent, it's not up to you to have to decide in the moment whether you're gonna allow or not allow, it's just how it is.
And I can say I'm not comfortable making an amendment to, you know, the procedure, that's the policy procedure, that's been in place just off the floor like this, so I'm, you know, I'm not comfortable just saying, okay, let's do this now.
We could always take a, do some research or whatnot.
Well, this is basically right from the Vermont League of Cities. State statute and Vermont League of Cities, and that, we've made no changes to this, right? To this?
That's the one that's in place.
I think one other problem that follows, none of us were here when it was initially approved. You know, we're all relatively new with this procedure. And I understand that everything you have on there meets state statute, whether other things that can be included, it still meets state statute. Just because, you know, this amendment could meet state statute. We don't know if it does or doesn't.
It does. We know it does.
No, I mean, the amendment she made could meet state statute and we don't know if that's true or not.
So you still have a vote on the table?
So, anything else? All those in favor of adopting the rules of procedure, say aye. Opposed?
No.
No.
Two ayes and two noes? I'm gonna vote aye.
So Mr. Mayor, who voted yes, who voted no?
Ms. Charmanil voted yes, Ms. Pedersen voted yes, Ms. Ruben voted no, Mr. Ross voted no, and I voted yes. I'm just reviewing this page.
You can decide if you want that on another agenda.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. The next item, new business, Mr. Johnson?
Two liquor license renewals, one from West Side Market, another from Common Crimes. Castle down, very large in line.
Moving on, and anything else? Nothing else, Chris Charvalle? Any new business? I guess, look, new business, the chief happens to be here. I appreciate the letters that you have written. I don't know if it's going to do any good, but the first one was the House, it was the House, correct? That to cut funding, the payers' deputies to go sit in emergency rooms with mental health patients. This is something that appreciate you writing, maybe you could give a little background on that?
Sure, so the House Appropriations Committee is considering a bill that would cut funding for the Royal County Sheriff's Department to assist other law enforcement agencies that have emergency rooms in their jurisdictions with doing what they refer to as mental health sit watches for patients that are either violent or out of control. We've used or utilized their services many times and it is my personal opinion that the state has done very little since Hurricane Irene to combat mental health issues in this state, if nothing more than exacerbate them. And this is yet another cost shifting mechanism by legislature to force this upon municipalities that have, there's 12 municipalities in the state of Vermont that have ERs directly in their jurisdiction. It'll be an increased burden on our officers, you'll see additional overtime, guys will be ordered in to do mental health sit watches that they don't necessarily want to do. And the other concern that I have is that when any patient is brought from the outside of the city into the city to respond to this hospital, it now becomes our liability if force needs to be used against the patient to either control them or to keep them safe from ER staff or other patients. I don't, I don't think that puts us in a very good position. So I drafted that letter and sent it to House Appropriations, along with several other chiefs that had drafted similar letters and sheriff's departments as well, so.
It's my understanding that it's also been discouraged not to allow hospitals to have their own security folks? There's something that they, the regulators frown upon? They frown upon the hospitals having their own security folks, I guess?
We do have security. We don't have a security force, we have a person. The mental health issue is, is very, very difficult for hospitals. They're not necessarily set up for it. They, we have folks in there, in the emergency room, they have to be, generally most of them have to be under 24-hour watch. We have to be trained, there, there's a whole gamut of things that goes with it. And the reg, around caring for folks is very, very, may I say it again, very stringent. And it's, it's a very difficult situation, it's not being resolved very well, the cost of hospitals is huge at this point. North Country, I know, just invested $2 million to create two safe rooms and everybody complains about the cost of healthcare. So, but we, you know, it had to be done. So until the state does something about the problem that they basically create ignoring, it's still going to come down to local communities to deal with this particular population and their needs. It's not good.
So I just wanted to bring that up. It's an issue that when we start seeing overtime and additional overtime in the chief's budget, will, will no part of the re-
I would like to clarify, North Country Hospital has done, has gone step further and stepped up and offered to pay officers the rate that we incur for overtime. So my semantic aren't necessarily all about funding, it's all the other things that go along with it.
Right, yeah. Mr. Mayor, um, am I here just particularly from Royal County to cut the funding?
It's my understanding that Royal County has a contract with the state and they will have sheriff's deputies go to any hospital within the state that is requested by a mental health facility. So in this area, the Northeast Department of Human Services, they would call in or a hospital representative and say, our staff is no longer safe, this patient's attempting to exonerate, it's violent. They would call for Royal County to come and do a sit watch until that person's admitted somewhere else.
Is that public record that letter? May I have a copy of that?
Yeah, I can give you a copy. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, good, thank you. I guess that's all. We did get another one, the chief wrote regarding marijuana sales, which, is that passed the House? And I'm trying to follow them.
That letter was submitted to the Board of Directors at Vermont League of Cities and Towns. I admittedly disagree with their position to support S-154, which is the commercial sale of marijuana, and to ban local communities from the option of enforcing local ordinances. Vermont League of Cities and Towns priority are the individual cities and towns. And why that board chose, I'm just looking for an answer to a very simple question, why would you support that? Why would you take away local authority from a municipality to govern the issues that they see in their own communities as opposed to statewide stepping behind something that many cities and towns don't agree with? I've had nine calls in the last two weeks asking for a copy of our ordinance so that it can be adopted elsewhere. I think it's pretty clear what cities and towns want, they just think the legislature's not interested.
Interesting article just came out of Colorado about the huge increase in ER visits. And this is something that just came out, that there's been a ER visits since, since they legalized marijuana in Colorado have skyrocketed basically in the state of Colorado. Okay. That's all I have on that. Any new business? Alyssa, any new business? No? Mr. Ross? No? Okay, remove old business? Mr. Johnson? No. Mr. Charvalle? No. Ms. Verboen? I guess the only old business is, I was looking at the budget, I see we, we've overextended, of course, winter maintenance, but you put out a memo telling everyone that the budget's pretty well frozen.
Standard operating procedure for this time of year. Doesn't mean we panic, it means we start throwing things instead of departments, it becomes everybody.
Because we should be around 75%. Three months left if you divide it.
Yeah, that's one way to look at it. There's a lot of variables and a lot of activity that happens between now and June 30th. And that includes a lot of revenue that comes in at that time too. So it's the annual precaution. And there's just many things, because we're coming into our busy season as well. So there'll be a lot of expenditures that'll happen, because this will goes away. Can start tackling those summer projects, those big projects. So, you know, the next time you cut that, it's probably going to look very different.
I mean, it did look, it didn't look, I was going to say, bad, that's what I'm trying to say, I was using another term, when it was bad. It looks like we're on target in the majority of it, it looks like.
We're not losing sleep yet.
Right, that's what.
It'll come, that'll come end of May.
End of May, okay.
But so far, I think we're, I think we're in good shape.
Okay.
Plus we have taxes that come in, taxes are due May 15th, so that'll change the complexion of our business level.
Okay, that's all I have on that. Any old business? Any old business?
No.
Okay. Then the next meeting will be public hearing on the VCDP, CDVG implementation grant. It's going to be April 11th at 6:30 PM. And then the next regular scheduled city council meeting will be Monday, April 15th, tax day, at 6:30 PM.
Can you just explain what the VCDPCDBG implementation grant is? And, and what those symbols stand for?
Let me just think for a second. That's a public hearing on that and that, that motion will be coming before the council on the 15th. So it's Vermont.
Community Development Program.
Yeah.
Community Development Block Grant.
That's correct.
The federal is, federal is Community Development Block Grant. VC is Vermont Community Development Program.
Yeah.
And what does it do, what, what does the grant give us?
No, we've already had the grant, this is the public hearing that follows up the grant, right?
I think this is a new application, I just don't recall at the moment what it's, where this is going to be the public hearing. It's supposed to be tonight. So I can, let me just go into my office for a second.
Okay.
Yes, for. To remember, oh, that's right. This is happening with a committee. Do you remember who this is for?
$100,000 is total that you can ask for, but it's focused primarily for housing, low-income housing, but we're going to shoot for it anyway because it included, there is a little piece that's for community improvement in low-income areas, so we're going to shoot for it.
So what will happen at that hearing on the 11th? So we know whether or not, so the public's whether or not to come or not?
It's basically a question and answer opportunity.
I'm sorry?
It's a question and answer opportunity.
Anything else? Then we need a motion to adjourn at 7:35. Motion made, is there a second? Seconded, discussion, then all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carried.